Okay, it is 6 o'clock and January the 11th. This is a special meeting of School District 158. Can we have roll call please?
Mr. Gentry? Mr. Garin?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi?
Here.
Mrs. Mayarino?
Here.
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
Okay, and if you could repeat Mr. Gentry's name one more time, you might find him here.
Sure, Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Perfect.
All right, all seven are here, we have a quorum. First item is I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session at 6:01 for the items enumerated in the agenda.
Second.
Second from Mr. Troy, can we have roll call?
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
That'd be yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayarino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry, did I?
Yeah.
Yes, again.
Okay.
Okay. That motion passes, we will move into closed session for right now. Thanks.
Despite having surgery just 11 weeks ago on his fractured right ankle, he will be limited to the-
Okay, we're back from closed session at 7:07. We are suspending closed session. Apologize for getting back up here a few minutes late. So I'd like to make a motion to resume public session here at 7:08. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Okay, we're all here. We can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item five is public comment. I think Ms. Lombard is going to read the public comments that there are five of them. The three-minute limit.
That is correct. Our first comment is from Mrs. Parraza. Dr. Owen Administration, we have been extremely disappointed with the leadership of District 158 throughout COVID, which is why we pulled our three children and have put them in private school where they are finally thriving in the actual sense of the word. As a taxpayer, I still have a vested interest in District 158, which is why I need to bring this to your attention. A high school teacher responsible for upholding the district's values and inclusion is spewing complete uneducated and unfounded fate on his Facebook page. I would hope that, as many companies do, your administration would have a policy on social media. This post, as well as many others that I've seen from teachers calling parents whiny, is so disappointing and goes against everything that new artwork at HHS says. It's time to make a choice, help the taxpayers, parents, and children of this community, or continue harboring the teachers and administrators who don't subscribe to 158's ideals of all children always. I have attached pictures of the post in question. Thank you. The next is from Kim Singer. Dear Board of Education and Dr. O, I take this time to email you as a deeply concerned and heartbroken parent. I find this year a complete shatter for my children, so so many others experiencing this horrific setup known as remote learning. Not only have my children suffered immensely academically from the way in from this way of learning, they have internally been damaged. Like our Chicago Public Schools say, this is something that can never be fixed. The longer this continues, the more damage is done. Aside from academics, my children have emotionally, mentally, and physically been changed for the worse. This is a helpless and heartbreaking loss for our community as a whole. Our district has received nearly $1 million in CARES Act stimulus funds to help go to safely opening schools for in-person learning. Where has that gone and why has that not been used for what our community and our kids need? So many larger school districts like ours have opened their doors for in-person learning since August. That is not a matter of if this can be done successfully, this is a matter of taking the courage and doing what's right for our youth. We can do this safely. It has been shown across the state and the country. Our community is counting on this board and superintendent to do what is needed to open our schools now. We can't continue the damage done to our children, and nobody should ever think the alternative of remote learning is what is best for them, even during a pandemic. Studies have shown that our children are not spreading the illness. Please do what is right tonight and show us, parents, that you are not just dangling a carrot in front of us to try to silence the voices that are brave enough to come forward with our children's best basic needs at heart. I need the school district to remind me once again why we chose to live here, why we are known as one of the best districts in the state, and why our children are better off here than anywhere else. It's time to step up and work together as a community to open our schools. The next is from Crystal Hill. Hello, everyone. I'm writing on behalf of my son in the Strategy Ed program at Martin Elementary School. It's now been almost a year that we've been in and out of remote learning. That in and of itself should shock you and pressure you into change. However, it is clear by your actions that you continue not to put students first. The children need and thrive within a classroom environment. My son doesn't attend to a screen whatsoever. It's imperative that he receives therapies and a fair education to help him grow and develop into as functional and independent of an adult as possible. It's understandable to follow state guidelines, state and governmental guidelines. However, we have to move on and get these kids back in person. We will continue to have to struggle through this. It's not just going to disappear. The question I pose to you is this. Why can I look around the community and see other businesses, organizations, and experiences figuring out how to open up? I can walk around downtown Crystal Lake and Huntley and take my kids to swim lessons, to an OT appointment, and to go to Target and go shopping. Even this Saturday night, going out to eat, and we were struggling to find a restaurant table to take a walk in because they weren't so full of diners. Why is the school the inconsistent area? We need to forge ahead and continue to support children with in-person learning, especially our Strategy Ed kiddos. We were recently told 15 hours before class starting that we were switching back to remote learning for the Strategy Ed community. This email was sent last night. No explanation except that it isn't due to a COVID exposure, and it is due to circumstances. Superintendent Rowe, you told us that you would be transparent. This is blatant concealment. I implore you, please get our kids back into school. The next is from Brittany Spears. Dr. Rowe and members of the board. This morning, we got to watch our friends and families in surrounding districts once again send their children back to school while we fired up our Chromebooks. I hesitate to bring it to your attention that the district has stubbornly remained defiant of the outcry of many, and children should be and need to be in school buildings. I was going to bite my tongue, but then my first grader looked at me and told me he didn't feel very smart on Zoom, and he just wished he could go back to school. He's six, and his heart is broken. His spirit is broken, and I couldn't remain silent. The idea of resiliency doesn't mean a whole lot when you get a front-row view of your own child losing his confidence and his love of learning. Now you've successfully voted to raise taxes. Our taxes received government stimulus funds and saved much in the way of studentless buildings and parked buses. Please remember, you're losing something much more precious and valuable along the way. The disappointment and anger of parents may not weigh much on your conscience, but I hope that the weight of what will not easily be undone for these children is felt. I hope the waves of change are recognized. I hope the fire ignites within you to champion for the majority. Every step taken should be a step towards full-time in-person schooling for the children who desire it, the children who need it. The world around us is bounding for normal, while it feels like the district is spinning its wheels for a better part of the year. You have the power to gain ground, to move us forward, and I'm begging you to do just that. Thank you. And the final public comment is from Laura Murray. Congratulations. It's 2021, and our students are still at home e-learning. Tonight, I'm calling on the superintendent and board to lead this district, calling on the teachers to do the job they love. There isn't any data anywhere in the state schools that state schools are unsafe. I do not need to waste your time with sharing the hundreds of thousands of teachers, students, and staff that are back in school and are doing just fine. Schools are safe. Now, when many in our district are saying stay home, stay safe during the holidays, and as we as a community via social media see many people traveling and going on vacations, the hypocrisy is unbelievable. During the season of tension politically, I am calling on the integrity of this district. The ideology of a teacher should be unknown to every single student, and shame on you if it's not. No parent is looking to a teacher to guide their children politically. Social media is as harmful as much as it is useful, if at all. We have even begun to see via social media our union leaders being called into question. We have to be better than this. It has also come to the community's attention of the amount of money our district will be receiving for the second installment of the CARES Act stimulus package. It's a total of $720,000. For a record, I would like to say that again. Huntley School District 158 will be receiving $720,000 from the stimulus to add to the more than $200,000 from the first stimulus payment. That's nearly $1 million. The community is very curious on how that money will be spent, since schools have not been in-person learning for nearly a year. Will you be doing what Naperville School District did with their surplus and giving it back to the taxpayers? Enough is enough. Let the community who had the most to lose and did the least. Sincerely, Laura, an invested, passionate mother of two and current school board runner for the upcoming election, April 6th, and my husband Scott Murray.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the public comments that were sent in. On item number six, return to in-person learning update. Dr. Rowe.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, so this evening I'm going to cover a, actually let me back up just a little bit prior to sharing. Let me share my screen. Bear with me for just a moment. For those at home, actually I don't. All right. Okay, again, thank you very much. This evening I'll share several topics, beginning with updates that have been recently made with the McKinney County Department of Public Health that impact our ability to make decisions for making our school decision, whether it be in-person or remote. The determination of what our survey results yielded and the model for kindergarten through fifth grade hybrid and the adjustments that were made there. We're going to review our six through 12 hybrid model, since it's been a little while since we've shared that. No changes have been made. We're going to just review so everyone is aware. And then during this presentation, we'll be setting for discussion, we'll be setting a target date for return to in-person learning for all grades, and then share some additional considerations in terms of reminding of our safety precautions in school and see where the discussion goes. So a little bit of background. Very important, as we've been, this district has been very consistent throughout this process in our reliance and our partnership with the McKinney County Department of Health. We relied on the experts in the field to guide us. But what I think is also really important to note is that we've learned along the way. In the last 10 months, none of us have ever dealt with living life in a pandemic. The most recent pandemic of this nature was 100 years ago. No, we have not dealt with this. And so what I think is really important is that we, along with our Department of Health, have learned quite a bit along in the process. And as I share this, I think that it's important to note that we remain in steadfast alignment with the McKinney County Department of Health, and I actually commend them for their ability to continue learning and evolve their stance and guidance to us on how we make decisions in the school district. And as I said, they've served as our expert counsel, which I think is really important. We are educators. We are not epidemiologists. We are not trained to make decisions based on what's going on in terms of public health. We have to rely on them for their guidance. So the McKinney County Department of Health and a team of school districts, the superintendents in the county, helped develop those metrics that we have been using. And then that countywide guidance was updated just before we entered our winter break there at the end of December that I'll update you on tonight by incorporating some additional tools from the Federal Center for Disease, for the CDC that had not prior been a part of the IDPH. In that guidance, if you were to click on the interim school guidance on the McKinney County website, you'll see the additional considerations for use in the decision-making metrics. And this is where they're incorporating that additional guidance. The updated guidance reflects a greater recognition of schools' ability to mitigate risks of transmission that may be going on in the greater community. Now, what I think we all know, that we've always believed, we can, schools are safe. We know that our schools are safe. Yet at the same time, we were faced with a recommendation by the Health Department to be in a virtual environment because of community transmission factors. And I stand by that decision, and also will continue to share with you, it would be, in my opinion, it is irresponsible to shift away from the Health Department, which is why we have been in remote for as long as we have. So these updated guidance reflected the addition of the CDC mitigation factors, which I will go over in detail. And that CDC guidance recognizes a broader range of the risk assessment and how those five key mitigations can impact the decision. And what I think is really important to note is the new guidance shows the deeper context and how decisions should be made. And I quote that they should not be used in isolation nor viewed as hard cutoffs, which is how we've been using them. And I think shows that evolution in thinking. So what are the five key mitigations? There are no secrets. They're things that we have in place consistently throughout our district. And it's consistent and correct use of masks and our ability to ensure that our students are wearing their masks and teaching them how to wear them appropriately. Social distancing to the largest extent possible, meaning can we maintain the six feet of separation in our schools wherever we possibly can? Hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, having the hand sanitizer in the classrooms and around the building, as well as taking the appropriate breaks for regular hand cleaning and teaching students when and how to cover cough and their nose when they sneeze. And then cleaning and disinfection. How are our classrooms cleaned on a regular basis? Are we able, are we using the appropriate cleaning supplies that can kill the COVID virus? And how frequently is that occurring? And then the contact tracing process in collaboration with the Health Department. Our nurses, I think I've shared in these open meetings before, our nurses have been fantastic. They are, they've been real heroes for us in terms of tracking down a positive case or a contact that needs to be traced. And that will only intensify for those cases when we have a larger group of people in our building. That being said, those five mitigations, we're very confident that we have them in place in our schools, and we have them in place with fidelity throughout all of our buildings and have since the beginning of the school year. So what does this guidance look like? This chart that I'm displaying right now shows some of the same things that we've been paying attention to in the past. First, the number of cases per 100,000, which is basically our incidence rate. The percentage, our positivity rate. There are the five key mitigation strategies. On the second page, you've got the percent change of new cases per 100,000 in the last seven days. You've got the percentage of hospital inpatient beds that are occupied, the percentage of intensive care unit beds that are occupied, the percentage of hospital inpatient beds that are specifically dedicated to COVID, and the existence of a localized outbreak potentially. So what the county Health Department is recommending is that we take our current four areas of decision-making matrix, which is incident rate, positivity rate, hospital bed availability, and a total number of cases. And then you add the CDC guidance of recognizing that these areas could contribute to community spread and what our ability to use the five mitigations may be to reduce the risk of that spread. And what the guidance goes on to say is, if a school district, even if community spread is high, but these mitigations can be implemented with fidelity across the district, their new learning indicates that they recognize a decreased likelihood of transmission within school. Because we, unlike many other businesses, have the ability to control our environment, how much we clean, control the number of people that are coming in, how masks are being worn and complied with, we have the ability to control our environment at a much different level than many other businesses. This is not new information. We've known that we have this ability. But it goes a long way that our health partner has come to the conclusion that they agree and recognize formally that this addition of these mitigations can dramatically reduce the transmission risk within our building. So our current considerations, in addition to recognizing that, you know, the community transmission levels continue to be too high for an all-out full return. You know, the guidance that we have, we are not meeting all four areas of the health metrics that we were previously using. But with the addition of the mitigations, our confidence level about re-entering the building with a hybrid group of students is increasing. Therefore, we don't want to move too quickly, and we don't want to abandon the existing decision-making. That is not what we're doing. We remain completely in alignment with the Health Department and continue to expect that we are operating with full health support. We want to continue our pathway that we follow, making progress towards our goal, which is a full return of students. But we must do so responsibly and with prudent action. So given this full context, a return to hybrid is appropriate at this time, but under a model that enables our fidelity to meet these mitigation strategies. In particular, the mask wearing, which obviously we can control, but then the six feet of separation is important. So that way, our step is appropriate, but prudent when at the same time. So I mentioned the six feet and the masks. The number of families opting for in-person learning also played a major factor in terms of determining the model that we chose. Because the majority of those families, as you'll see, just over 75% of our families choosing in-person learning dictated that a half-day model was appropriate in order for us to maintain our six feet of separation at the elementary level. The model creates a glide path for us, and this is some of the painstaking changes that we had to make, and the decisions that we had to make, that I'll go into a little bit more detail later. We made some of these changes now, so that down the road, as conditions continue to improve, the vaccination that is right around the corner, unfortunately, the governor has placed educators in Group 1B, so that's on the horizon. I'm excited about that. Our nurses have been vaccinated with their first round. We have been informed that some of our related service personnel that have one-on-one work with students have been invited to get the vaccine, that has yet to happen. And we expect educators to be around the corner when that process can begin. But it sets us to the point where, down the road, the glide path, when the vaccination is in place and our numbers dramatically decrease, we can begin discussion about a full return, when that's appropriate. And it provides the best instructional for our fully remote students as well, which is important, because we had to create a remote hybrid, or a remote academy, and separate them completely from our students selecting to be hybrid, so they could maintain their fully robust daily instructional schedule and not be a part of any potentially in-and-out that may be, that may have to occur depending on outbreaks in the building, and they can just stay focused on their education. So, to give a little bit of feedback as to the survey data, just over three-quarters of our families opted for in-person instruction, and that has not really changed. There's about a two percent variance from back in July when we took our first survey. And I think it's important to note, and I want to note it publicly, that we've never deviated from our desire to follow the community's wishes. We're representative of the community. The school board is representative of the community in terms of elected officials. We want to represent what our community wants. But I think it's really important to remain focused on the fact that, you know, the reasons why we shifted to remote in August, with the lack of information and everything that we had to deal with at that time, and then with the Health Department making the recommendation that we be in a virtual environment, you know, I just hope that our community can understand that sometimes those decisions just have to be made away from what the majority wants, when sometimes additional information is available that we have to make our decisions. But, all the point being, we still want to represent our community and what our community wishes. You know, it's also very important to note the distribution of these selections, it varies widely, and I'm going to give you an example, so you can understand, of some of the behind-the-scenes work that had to take place, why our date is what it is, and why we have had to, the teacher change conversation was to the level that it was because of some of this information. And then of those that chose to be hybrid, just under seventy percent said they would be needing transportation to and from school, from our transportation department. So, this slide shows some of the specifics in one snapshot of a kindergarten, a few kindergarten classrooms of the variances. So when I say twenty-five percent of our elementary community are opting to be remote, it's not like twenty-five percent of every single classroom opt to be remote. And I think I shared the example of a first-grade classroom in a prior meeting, but Classroom 1, twenty-five percent choose to be remote, whereas Classroom 2, only five percent choose to be remote. So what, the domino of what this can create is, a kindergarten in a particular building, to where you have class sizes that begin to vary teacher by teacher, and you could have some classes that are maxed out in terms of morning and afternoon, whereas some classes that may have six kids in the morning session and afternoon session, and the neighbor may have ten, eleven students in the morning and afternoon. And it becomes a balancing act of giving the student an equal and fair experience. And so that debate had to occur, of were there any instances where in-person students may have to be shifted, which was the reason why we asked that question of those families that were opting for hybrid, is more, do more days in-person, is that more important than changing the teacher? Because our ultimate goal was, we heard the community, that, you know, the two days of in-person back in October wasn't enough, they wanted more days in-person. So, if we were going to have to be on a half-day, we needed to be, try to do our best to get to four or five days a week. And we were able to accomplish that, but I wanted you to understand that it wasn't just picking twenty-five percent up out of each individual classroom, there's a lot of variances here. So this is the model. The hybrid model, in-person, are divided into two groups, an AM group and a PM group. Group A, the AM group, will attend five days a week in the morning. Group B will attend five days a week in the afternoon. When they are not attending, they are completing their asynchronous learning, their specials, and interventions that will be conducted remotely. Now, I'll pause here for just a second to talk about that asynchronous work. We've done a lot of improvement efforts and work at the high school level to enhance what asynchronous means, and to enhance the quality of instruction and the amount of live instruction that is available and teacher availability during those asynchronous times. And I don't want anyone to think that just because this says students will shift into asynchronous learning is going to mean that teachers are going to push out virtual worksheets and the students are going to figure it out on their own with their parents' help, drawing their parents away from their work, because that's certainly not the case. The work that should be occurring, and we're going to be working with our elementary teachers on how to make this happen, but this work should be an extension of what they did the morning that they were there, or the afternoon of the day before that they were there, not new work. And our goal there is to enhance what's happening in the classroom and not draw from the parents, the precious time the parents have during their workday when they're trying to juggle so much at home with their students also being there. And then of course, their specials and their interventions will be happening during that afternoon or morning time and are not physically in the building. If our students are remote, their schedule remains unchanged. They will have a new teacher, but they maintain a full, robust daily schedule that is completely free of reliance on the hybrid model, which are very important things. I'm going to go into a little bit of detail about the remote schedule a little bit later. So what that schedule will look like? Group A will be in-person eight-thirty to eleven, just like they were the couple of days that we were in session back in October, and then their afternoon was their asynchronous time. Eleven to twelve-fifty-five remains that common lunch period and recess and separation from learning and break for our teachers to transition, students to work their way home, and then the afternoon group comes in from twelve-fifty-five to three-twenty-five. If you're a Martin family, that's earlier by fifteen minutes because of their slight schedule difference, so that way they can, for transportation purposes. So Martin's day starts at eight-fifteen and ends at three-ten, but our Martin families are, should be familiar and comfortable with that already. Our third-grade families, it becomes a little bit of a transition as they're still new to the building. So the remote model is the same as it currently is. So what you see on the screen has literacy in the morning, where this particular teacher's live special is, some small groups, their break, and then they come back in the afternoon for math. Not every remote teacher is going to have the exact same schedule, obviously specials have to rotate and be different throughout the day, and the teacher may just, may do things a little differently, but we wanted to give you a visual of what their, the schedule would be. So, those remote families, let's talk a little bit about that, because they experienced a pretty significant change, and it's not, it's not a change that we handled lightly. I know it was painful for them, and it was painful, it was painful for us. At no point did I ever want to have to tell a family that you're going to change your teacher mid-year. One of the, in my opinion, one of the great successes that we've had at the elementary level in being remote as long as we have, are the relationships that have been formed with those teachers and our students, and I can tell you, they are genuinely strong relationships. And it surprised us that they would be developed and be so deep and developed so quickly. So our students and their families are, as you can imagine, not happy about a change in instructor, and our teachers are equally as upset that this is occurring. But at the same time, the thing that, the component that made it worthwhile for us were two things. One, it guaranteed our remote families who are choosing to remain remote for the remainder of the school year. It guarantees them the ability to have their full, robust, live instructional day that is not dependent upon the hybrid learning classroom. Because what happened in October, in the prior schedule, our remote families had two and a half hours of live instruction in the afternoon on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then it was shifted to in the morning on Wednesday when everybody was remote. So they did not have a consistent schedule, and that was very difficult on those families. So they will be free from, no connection to the hybrids, hybrid students whatsoever. Their schedule will be unchanged, it will always be the same, always have a full day of live instruction. And as I had, you know, many conversations with parents during the last month, since we've communicated this likelihood with them, even if they started off as being very frustrated that we were in this position, they're, at the end of the conversation, there was at least an understanding of why we were doing what we were doing, and an acknowledgement that that full day and that live schedule and the consistent schedule was going to be able to be maintained. You know, they at least appreciated that that was considered, and they weren't going to be subject to back-and-forth movements with whatever happens to hybrid and if there's an outbreak in the building and they have to shift to remote, that they're unaffected by all of that. And so I, and I appreciate that, I have many great conversations with parents, and they, they all came around, those who I spoke to, in terms of understanding, which was good. And I think what will end up happening is that the end of this school year, we'll have a lot of students that have the opportunity to make great relationships with more than one really fantastic teacher, is my hope, and my expectation. So, that first week as we make this transition, there obviously, we are going to focus on relationship building. Those students in the remote classes, we need a heavy focus on the social, emotional learning and the transition itself. So they should expect that that to be the focus of our teachers, to almost start over in terms of building that rapport with students, and ensuring that they feel safe, they feel comfortable, they feel loved, and then we'll move forward. And the new teachers, the collaboration is beginning in terms of what they need to know about their students when they get their rosters. Our teachers that are going through, that are going to be our remote teachers are going to begin a comprehensive training, boot camp training that begins on Wednesday of this week, that will carry them through to the time that they will be in the classroom, to catch them up on a number of areas that some of these other teachers have been practicing for a while. But there also will be collaboration time between the new teachers and our current teachers to share information about those students and what they need to know, so they can help, help the student be successful, and what gains have been made in the classroom, and they can get a head start on getting to know their students. You'll be hearing from Ms. Lombard a little bit later in tonight's board meeting, where she'll present the, our desire to use our fifth Remote Planning Day next Friday, Friday the twenty-second, where a lot of that transition, that day will be dedicated to the transition, and then how we're going to assess our students at the elementary level, so that the students, the teachers that have had them this long can kind of start the report card process and, you know, rate them on their progress towards meeting standards, so that teacher can pick up and know where they're starting in terms of personalizing that instruction. But then also conversations about, what do I need to know about Sean or Paul, that I need to help ensure that I carry them forward with their learnings? And so a little bit of information about, you know, synchronous and hybrid, just as a reminder, everybody's, you know, two favorite terms, synchronous is live instruction, asynchronous is on my own. PE, music, and art will continue to be offered as it is now, when students are not in the building and are remote students. So in-person students will have their specials in the afternoons or in the morning when they're not in the building, and remote students will be scheduled during their day as they currently do. How will interventions and gifted services be conducted? RTI interventions will be delivered remotely. Tier-two and tier-three students will continue both hybrid and remote as they are receiving their interventions currently. Designated interventions may change, as some of those teachers have been assigned to a remote classroom, but they will still continue to receive their intervention, and the intervention progress, of course, will be monitored for student improvement. Gifted services, this has been a question I've received from a number of families. In-person students that have the gifted designation will be placed in gifted clusters just like they normally are when we're in-person. Remote students that have the need for gifted instruction will also be assigned to a dedicated gifted classroom. However, there may be some teacher, they may need to attend math with a different teacher in order to get the appropriate placement, but be a small case-by-case scenario there. But all teachers that will be working with our students with the gifted designation have experience doing so with in-person, in-person learning. Our special education students, they'll continue to receive their services and accommodations in ways that are compatible with the learning mode that they selected, meaning if they're in-person, our co-taught and direct instruction students, if they're in-person, they'll receive their IEP services when they are physically present in the building to the greatest extent possible. And then our students in self-contained classrooms will notice no change. Their schedule does not change, they will continue on with their extended day. Our multilingual classrooms, so our ESL, English as a Second Language, and ELL students will receive bilingual services, they'll continue to receive their supports in compatible ways, again, if they're in-person, as much as possible while they're in-person to achieve the minutes that they need, and if they're remote, then it's currently how it's occurring. Our dual-language students will, are going to receive a combination of live, in-person, flexible small groups throughout their day. It's a little bit of a different model than the general education students, because we don't have extra dual-language teachers to dedicate to these classrooms. So the in-person students, there'll be a sharing of the same teacher and some additional dual-language support teachers that we do have, we just don't have enough to dedicate to solely remote sections. So, the dual-language students won't be necessarily, won't be changing their teacher, the teacher will be providing in-person and remote instruction to both groups at different points throughout the day. It's actually, Dr. Bill Castillo went over this model with me, it's a very strong model, I think our families are going to be very pleased with it. So that's the elementary model. As a little bit of a review of our secondary model, though it's been a couple of months since we've covered this, there are no changes to what we presented in terms of our fifty-fifty AB model. In-person students will attend for two days, two full days a week, Monday, Tuesday in Group A, Thursday, Friday in Group B. Everyone is remote on Wednesday. All students that are opting to stay remote will either zoom in to the live classroom or we've created remote sections wherever possible. Remote sections that were created predominantly follow the core classroom, meaning social studies, math, science, and English, they're much easier to create remote sections because there's a lot more sections of, say, English 1. You gotta think, how many freshmen, they all have to take English 1. It's a lot easier to create remote sections than it is if your psychology is inelusive and there may only be a small handful of remote sections, a small handful of sections, period, or like, you know, newspaper or something like that where, where there just may not be the possibility of creating a remote section. So how did our secondary schools choose? Fifty-four percent of the high school opted to come back in a hybrid model. Sixty-five percent of Heinemann and just under sixty-three percent at Marlo are choosing in-person. So what does that translate to? Fifty-four percent of the high school divided in half is about eight hundred kids in our high school on any given day. Heinemann is sixty-five percent, nine hundred students. Sixty-five percent, nine hundred students divided in half is about three hundred students in Heinemann each day. And then at Marlo, it works out to be about four hundred students in the building each day, if Marlo's at about thirteen hundred students. So we're not, and we're not talking about a huge number of students in the high school when you're used to having over three thousand students in the building on any given day. I can tell you that remembering back to the days when the seniors left and there were minus seven hundred students and it felt empty, I can only imagine what eight hundred students are going to be like. Group assignments and communication, I know families are eager to learn about. Communication from individual schools will be sent to parents later this week about which group you've been assigned, as well as if the teacher change has been necessary. As we've always said, siblings to the group, you know, wherever possible, we place siblings in the same day. But they can expect communication from their building principal, not, you know, the district won't be sending a mass communication on this, but the building level will be sending personalized communication. And then this gets us to our target return date, given the, as I shared early in the presentation, our target return date, in conjunction with the McKinney County Department of Health, was January twenty-fifth. January twenty-fifth, I know that a number of other county schools have set earlier dates, but with the change that we were making to the elementary model, there's a lot of work that needed to go on in the background, and January twenty-fifth was And January twenty-fifth was the earliest date that we could possibly, we felt we could possibly get it done. Um, so just, you know, I, I know there's numbers for the start of this week and some that are starting next week, uh, that I wanted to make that clear, uh, in this, in this public forum. And then our early childhood families have been already, have already received the communication. Uh, the next round of students, which are our students that are in a, a blended classroom, um, come back on, on, on the nineteenth. Our self-contained, fully contained students, uh, have been in session at the early childhood center, um, as long as our other classrooms have, classrooms have our, uh, self-contained classrooms. Transportation information, um, the bus service, like I said, will be available for all families who opted in. And as I said earlier, about, uh, sixty-eight percent of our families didn't choose transportation. Um, I would advocate that our families that are capable of driving their own children to school, uh, please do so because as a, as a reminder, our, the IDPH guidelines set, uh, transportation, a maximum of fifty students per bus, um, and in some of our larger neighborhoods, um, that, that will be, will be very close to that number. Um, fifty students per bus is not, is not guaranteeing one student per seat. So, uh, if that's important to you, I hope that you, and you can, I would advocate that you drive your children to school, but if not, we're happy to provide the service. The bus route transportation information will be sent to families. It'll be available, actually, I take that back. Um, it'll be available through Power School app as you normally look at your trans, your route information, um, on or just before, uh, the twentieth. We're hoping to have that posted, uh, by the end of the day on the nineteenth, um, but the latest, the twentieth, it'll be available for families to know and make sure that their, um, uh, what their bus number is and that their route, the stop or the bus stop has been the same as though they're used to. Food services, food services, as I've shared before, has been, um, making and delivering, um, to thirteen hundred families, meaning almost three thousand lunches and breakfast a day, um, and we've been delivering them. So this is a big shift for our food services department. K five students in both the AM and PM sessions, and this is very important, um, will be provided a lunch or breakfast to bring home every single day if they choose. Um, and I, it, it, you see this link highlighted in the presentation because this presentation, along with our letter explaining this, will be sent to families tonight, um, you know, after the discussion, um, and they will have to sign up for their student to have a, a breakfast and lunch, um, designated for them to grab and take home with them each day, um, if they would like it. It's, it's open to anyone who wants it, um, but they will have to sign up if that's of interest. Six through twelve, lunch will be served, um, in school while they're there. We have the social distancing guidelines that are in place, um, you know, visiting the high school and middle schools, you'll see desks, um, in the cafeteria areas, um, any separation, um, to meet that fifty person maximum per, uh, for eating area, uh, with six feet of separation and desks all facing the same direction so we can stay in, in, in tune with those guidelines. Um, the daily curbside, yes.
So related to food service, are they, parents paying for this food service?
No, they will not.
Okay. How's this being subsidized?
The parents, the, the, and I welcome Mr. Altmaier to chime in on some of this information if, um, if I get it, if I get it wrong, but we did, we receive, receiving some federal subsidies to, to offset, to allow any student that wants, um, a lunch and meal delivered to them or to be available while, um, during this, this difficult time financially, that they have the ability to do that and they get reimbursed for the number of meals that we distribute.
Okay. It's, uh, I thought so. I did, but this not part of that COVID relief.
It is not. It's a completely separate, um, pot of dollars.
Yeah, okay. No problem.
Yeah. It, it's the summer feeding program and it's for all, uh, it's for any, anybody who's eighteen years or younger is eligible for a free, uh, free meal, whether that's breakfast and lunch, um, or otherwise. So, um, so it's under the National School Lunch, uh, Summer Feeding Program, which they extended to the end of this school year.
All right. So, and then those families that, uh, that are choosing to stop and to stay remote, but still are in need, uh, while we won't have the ability to continue our home delivery service because of the, uh, the number of routes that we're going to be running, because we're going to be running a AM route, a midday route, a second midday route, and then an end of the day route, in addition to our secondary route, we just won't be able to continue, uh, with the meal delivery service. But we will have Marlo's, um, drive-up available. And I know that that's not a hundred percent convenient, so I would ask and hope those families that if that is, is, is a, a difficulty, um, that they'll reach out and we'll do our best to find some way to, to accommodate them. Um, I don't know how exactly, but we'll get creative so that way we can continue, continue to service those that are in need. But again, um, if you're interested in the daily curbside pickup, um, that interest survey will go a long way to ensuring we have enough meals for those that are, uh, that are interested. So new, another change to our, uh, when we return in person is the daily symptom-free self-certification. Um, so we were doing this prior to the monthly certification. As we're shifting back to in-person, we're going, we're going to require a daily certification from families that their students have not been in contact with a positive COVID case, um, and they are not currently exhibiting any symptoms each day. Our pre-K through five families, uh, on the first day that they're in attendance, they'll receive a, a handful of a number of weeks worth, um, of paper cards that they'll be able to take home for the parent to initial and signify that their students do not have any, um, any symptoms on that day, as well as they have, have not been in close contact with a, a positive or suspected COVID case. Um, on the first day, the twenty-fifth, this is very important, and the twenty-fifth, the very first day, our monthly self-certification is going to serve as that daily certification so we can get the students in the building in order to get them home with, um, with the things that they need to provide that daily certification. Um, so all this information will be sent to families, uh, in our next communication, as well as a, a number of reminders between now and then. Um, so our elementary families will, will initial or sign a, a form each day that will be placed in a bag tag on their student's backpack to verify that they have been, uh, that they are, are healthy to be in school that day. Anyone six, K through twelve who arrives to the district without their daily self-certification will go through a screening process, um, that will result in a parent contact, um, to remind them of that screening process and work to get that, get that cleaned up. Um, six through twelve will be an online form. Um, those students, uh, the, much like our staff receives, will, parents will receive a, an email each morning, uh, very early, um, that they will be able to sign electronically that their students have, are free of symptoms as well as have not been in contact, uh, with anyone with a positive COVID case. Um, for the initial few weeks, we will also be sending a text notification so our, help our parents get into the habit of that, uh, filling out that online form. Um, it's an early reminder, taking the text probably around six fifteen in the morning. So our parents, we will have instructions for our parents if they're not, if they're not interested in receiving that text message, they will be able to opt out of that. Um, and there'll be instructions as to how they can do that. Uh, but either way, what'll happen is our students six through twelve, they wear their IDs around their neck as they come into the building each day. So it's, it's been a requirement for a few years now. Um, and what hap, when the parents fill out their online form, our six through twelve students will walk into the building, they'll scan their IDs as they come in, and the staff will get, um, you know, a green screen that they have, uh, taken the self-certification for the day or a red, indicator that they have not, you know, divert them off to the screening office, uh, with our nurses to be sure that they are, uh, are passing the, the symptom screening and then parent contact will be made, uh, following that daily screening. This will, we've recognized this will be a little bit of a process, um, so there'll be a number of reminders to parents that, um, prior to our start, and then once we get started, hopefully it, it picks up. I can tell you I've been doing it every single day since, um, with March and, uh, I, we still, our staff still gets the text message every morning at five forty-five and, uh, it's, it's, it's a, it should become a part of habit. It'll, it'll become very habitual very quickly, I think. Um, some additional safety considerations, uh, just in anticipating some of the reminders that we may need as we work towards our return. Um, all state, all prior safety guidelines remain in place. Nothing has changed. The proper wearing of mask is vital. Um, the mask must be that two-layer cloth, the very thin masks that are all like the, the, the Lycra material, they do not work. We do not want them in our buildings. We want them to be safe. So two-layer cloth, it must fit snugly around the nose and mouth, no gaiters, no bandanas. Um, and if, if our students, obviously, sometimes you, you have a, especially in the winter months, um, the humidity will cause a, a, a surgical mask to get wet, uh, throughout the day. We have backups for our students, but we encourage them and really need them to bring their own. Uh, we expect them to bring their own, but we do have disposal masks on site, um, if there's an issue. We'll always take care of our kids. Um, all schools are well-supplied with hand sanitizer and disinfectant wipes. You'll notice whenever I take off the, uh, the projector in my screen, you'll notice the, the two and a half gallon tub over here on the, on the table, um, those we have, we have those in, in every classroom. Those are filled with nine hundred wipes for our teachers to wipe desks in between student visits, uh, in between sessions, um, and as needed throughout the day. If, if there is, you know, student sneezes or coughs, you can disinfect the desk on the spot, um, and relieve any of that concern. Um, the passing periods in six through twelve, they're currently, uh, have a ten-minute break in, in the remote. We're going to, we're shortening that back down to five, um, and we're going to control the passing period to the greatest extent as we possibly can. Um, but of course masks are going to need to remain on, um, throughout the day. And then as you've, as I've noted prior presentations, uh, we've increased our circulation of outside air throughout the day and increased that recirculation process to pump in as much fresh outside air instead of recirculating, uh, air in the building at a much greater rate than we have been in the past. With that, that's been awful lot. I'd be happy to take questions and allow the discussion to, uh, to move forward.
Just a quick question, the bus capacity, do you think that's well matched with the demand just given the opt-in percentages?
Sorry?
The bus capacity as far as, I mean, do we feel that's a risk at this point or are we closely, does the capacity match with the fifty person limit?
Um, Ms. Lombard, I'll let you take that a little bit closer to the transportation side of things, but I, I don't, to my knowledge, I don't believe it's going to be an issue at all.
Okay.
Ms. Lombard, give anything additional?
Yeah. So right now we're watching, um, based on the survey results, um, that we had, um, with the various, as Dr. O said, we have, um, some additional routes, um, midday that have to, to be, um, in place. Um, so, um, some of that will, routing will be a little bit tight. Based on the numbers that we have now, we are, we're able to, um, meet the requirements and the demands and whatnot. If we had an influx of people who would be requesting, um, transportation, we would need to look at that, um, uh, more closely. But based on our survey results right now, um, we are absolutely able to, to make that.
Okay.
Okay. Um, just kind of summarizing some of the emails I've seen, um, you know, people who are maintaining they want, they think we should be staying remote, even though we know a majority would like us to be in person. We've always felt as a group, we'd obviously prefer to be in person. Um, there, the theme I saw in several of these emails was we're utilizing a loophole. Why are we going to abandon the metrics? Um, so that's a, a common theme. So, so how would you, I mean, you answered it, but answered it more directly.
Absolutely. Uh, I've seen, I've seen a few of those emails as well, and I, I would, I would challenge that there is, this is in no way a loophole. Um, this is a, an evolution of, of learning through the ten-month process, um, and it's our health department, um, working with us as superintendents, recognizing that we have a very controlled environment in our school. And where the IDPH has been early on was hesitant to bring in the CDC guidelines. The CDC has, has maintained for, uh, for a good amount of time that schools are not super-spreaders. They, they do not serve as, um, as, as cesspools for the virus. Um, and I think that's been, that's evident in some of the school districts that have been, uh, been open a little bit longer than we have. Um, some of those communities in, in comparing some of that data, um, they don't, they haven't shown a higher rate of, of community transmission to school being open. Um, I think that just confirms what our health department is now telling us, that they as medical experts believe that with these mitigations in place, we can feel comfortable, uh, opening ahead of being completely in the, uh, in the metrics that we adopted because we have the ability to control our environment so, so much more than, than most of the place. Now, by no means are we throwing out the, the, uh, the health metrics. We, I still look at them every single day. Um, and what I've seen since November has been a pretty steady decline, um, with blips here and there, but a pretty steady decline, um, in our rate. Um, and if you look at our community, our zip codes, we're actually trending, uh, a little lower than, than the counties. Um, you know, it's hard when you, when you bring in three zip codes and you look at Lake and the Hills and Algonquin, as we only have a portion of Lake and the Hills and Algonquin. Um, but whereas at Huntley, which is where the majority of our students, we come from, uh, we're talking about positivity rate down at seven. Um, so it, it's not, I can't, I can't say that that's, that's our, that's the, the number we're going to go by because obviously we have Lake and the Hills and we have Algonquin we have to, to consider. And as a, as a whole, all three of them, the positivity rate, uh, is up around twelve. But, um, but it's still, it's heading in the right direction. And I think that was one of the things that I shared in the county superintendent's, uh, meeting was, I'm happy to see the health department coming this way. I feel comfortable using these mitigations, um, but most importantly, because we're heading in that, in that direction. I mean, if we were on a steady spike upward, I might question this a little bit more. But we're heading in the right direction. And I think that, um, knowing what our students need, what we believe that they've needed it all this time, but we have the health department on our side, heading, heading, uh, by our return. And that, that's what gives me confidence that not only is it a responsible decision health-wise, um, but we can, you know, it, it excites me that we can give our community what they've been asking for this whole time, but then also what I, I know as an educator our students need and why our students are hurting. And I think it's, it's, um, I'm excited for the day that we can welcome them back. That, that weekend October was, I said, it was like Christmas. It was, the, the, there's the, the best time of the year to see students in the building. And I look forward to that again, and, and really happy that we're headed in this direction.
Okay. However, I, I, I do, which is, I concur with all of you. If you want to catch us, that we had a public comment that made a comment that children are not spreading the virus, which is completely untrue. Children do still spread the virus if they get it. I mean, that, that happens, but what we're saying is we have, we feel through our mitigations and our environment that we're providing, that the likelihood of that is lessened and it's at a lesser degree than it's happening in the community as a whole, um, i- is what we're, we're thinking, uh, and based on what we've seen from data from other school districts, um, that, that it's been provided. So what we're doing is we're, we're evolving, as you said earlier, with, with a little bit more hard data that, that's come out over time.
I think it's important to add, no one should have the, of the opinion that we're going to be a hundred percent immune from this. Um, we will have cases. They, it, it's going to be brought into our schools from our community. Um, but what we have the ability to do in guaranteeing masks are going to be worn and in, in educating our students on how to wear them properly, even with a positive exposure, dramatically is it's reduced by having the mask in terms of transmission. And our younger children do transmit the virus at a much lower rate than even our older children. So, um, it's not, it, there's not a hundred percent guarantee that we're immune to this, but we, we have the ability, as you said, Mr. Cragg, to dramatically reduce the transmission rate because of the mitigations that we can put in.
All right. Others I'm sure have questions. Go ahead.
All right. Um, so I have a lot of questions actually, but I will ask a few and then I will allow others to ask questions so I'm not monopolizing, monopolizing everything. Uh, but, you know, we've recently learned about the, the variant.
Very.
So my question is, the CDC does, the McKinney Department of Public Health, do we know what makes this new variant virus fifty to seventy percent more contagious? Is it living on surfaces? Is it airborne now? Do we know what makes it more contagious, number one? And then number two, do we know that then the mitigations that have been given to us work, um, at preventing the spread or slowing down the spread of this new variant? Do, do we know if these mitigations work? Do we need to go to a three squad now? Do we need to wear goggles? I mean, and I'm throwing, you know, just thinking, if this goes hand in hand, do we know about the new virus and do we know if these mitigations work?
Well, the McKinney County Health Department has not specifically talked to us about how they believe, um, the variant that, that has, has been seen in the UK, um, they believe it'll impact schools. Uh, what we have done on our own research, uh, is the, the What we have done in our own research is the EPA has issued a statement very recently that all the cleaning supplies that we use and the end standard that they carry work against this variant because the variant has not changed the functional shape of virus, so to speak, as Mr. Brinkowski would put it. But our chemicals that clean the surfaces on a daily basis and in between students in the classroom will, will kill the virus. So that gives us a good level of confidence. Plus the transmission levels, wearing your mask, washing your hands frequently. The articles that I've read and looked into it indicate that that will still reduce transmission. But we have a meeting on Wednesday with the public health department and that's one of the questions that I have submitted for an answer. So hopefully I'll get an answer to that soon.
Okay.
At least their stance on it. I expect it to be the same as what I found, but looking for their stance.
Okay. So to back in on that, I'm going back to the beginning of your presentation. And you spoke of a team of districts that were working with the health department. Was District 158 represented in, who were these schools? Was District 158 represented at the table in this conversation and part of the decision making?
We absolutely were. This, this team of schools are all of the county superintendents. So every Wednesday, I am on a Zoom call with Melissa Adams, the head of the health department, with the head of nursing, with their epidemiologist, with Pete Austin, the head of the county board, administrator of county. And every school district in the county is on that phone call. On Tuesdays, Mr. Lombard represents the school district where they focus on, with the health department, where they focus on a little bit more of the day to day in the building processes with some of our nurses sit on that task force. And then additionally, District 158 has been a very active partner in helping the health department with some of their contact tracing. Some of our nurses go back and be on the task force in the summer. So we, we've been very active with the health department and maintaining a very strong relationship with them. So we, our, some of our nurses are very, very close to their daily processes. And then we, we're all connected in similar shape of form.
Okay, great. As I said, I have a lot of questions, so I'm going to pass on to other board members so that maybe Eric answered the same question and I'm not monopolizing or anything.
Right, I have a few. So if, and this is probably different for a kid of five and six or 12, but if they have chosen hybrid and they decide that, you know, remote is a better option for them, is that a difficult change? And then vice versa, if they were remote and wanted to go hybrid at one point?
Sure. You know, we, we hope that our families chose what they really wanted when they took that survey because we acted on them as if they did. But I also expect a handful of those changes. That, that change needs to occur at the building level. And if that change is desired, the building principal needs to be the person that they contact. But the impact of that, it would, it could cause, there, there is room in some of our remote sections for some of those changes one way, but if there is a large number of change, it will cause more teacher change and more students to lose their, lose their teacher or maybe more shuffling internally. There's not a lot of room coming from remote to hybrid. But if a lot of students shift from hybrid to remote, we'll have to add remote section at some point, which will take a group of students that are in, in person, it'll have to be spread out amongst the grade level. So that impact will ultimately take a teacher away from the student. But we, as I told all the families, every family that I spoke with asked that same question, what if? Because we have to recognize, we asked our families to make a decision about in-person or hybrid, in-person or remote, without knowing the model of they would choose. So we were asking something very difficult for them to do. And they've been very gracious to give us this information. So we expect a little bit of it because, you know, they were, as I said, they were blindly choosing which option they would like to have. And we needed that information in order to build out because it mattered how many students we could get into the building and how long there they could be depending on the number. So we're going to be as accommodating as we possibly can for people as we always are.
And then clearly if the, you know, the dad shows that he needs to revert back or change, we'd have to do so. But do you see any changes moving forward with the hybrid plan, you know, if things were to get better? I mean, the biggest thing I hear in the community is, you know, as long as we stick to something, stay with it is what would, what would really help families out. So do you, do you see this, this plan sticking around for a while?
I do, I do. And I think, and I, what I expect to happen is the last, we would have stayed in the last time had the health department not made their recommendation for us to go virtual because of the increasing numbers. So even since October, we've learned a ton about, about what this virus does and what it is and what it means. So moving forward with this, with these new mitigation strategies, I fully expect that we're going to be able to withstand some increases in the community because of what we can do in school. We're of course going to closely monitor that. We're going to work with the health department. But I, what I, I expect that if we have to go to a remote environment again, it'll be by classroom or by building. And I, I don't expect that it'll be by district that will just shift unless something dramatic happens. But I, we're going to, to hang on and fight like heck to stay in.
And I'll ask one more. I think you briefly touched on it, but you know, during the passing periods and in between the students, you know, the AM and the PM, are we having extra janitorial come in or are the teachers wiping it down and what's the expectations around that?
Well, we don't have the ability for our, we have extra, we have our janitorial services are all coming back. They're around the building already. And wiping down handles, wiping high touch surfaces. And what needs to be understood about that process is the janitorial services with the, the chemical that we have, the wet solvent touches the high touch surface. And our, the, the solution that we have, it sits for a minute and that's, and then the virus is dead. And then you come back and you wipe it down again. So a wet rag can handle a whole lot of doors with that surface. And then it'll dry for a minute and then that person comes back down, gives it a second wipe usually, or it just dries. But the surface is taken care of. We don't have the capabilities for our janitorial services to go in every single classroom, between every single passing period at the secondary level or even between the two sessions. So, you know, the expectation is that our teachers are going to wipe down in between classroom period and in between session. All of our teachers have all of the PPE that they need in order for this to happen. Nose buckets to spray and cloth, to gloves so that they don't have to touch the disinfectant wipes by hand. They have everything that they need so that that, that can happen. And I, you know, this is, we're in a crisis and this is all hands on deck. So the team can come together and actually expect that that will be an issue that won't, will go away quickly. Our teachers will, will of course do what they need to, we're there to help.
My turn? Thank you for the DPF presentation. And I, my first question is actually to the vaccine. Because that's the one thing I think that we have now or we're seeing now that we really didn't see earlier. From what I've read and heard, the phase 1A is 150,000 people need to get that vaccine before they'll move on to phase 1B. 1B is where teachers are included in that next tier. And that's a total of about 1.2 million out of 3.2 million. So my question becomes, as we've seen with some of the emails that are urging us not to do anything because the vaccine is on the horizon, have you heard anything from your meetings what that horizon actually looks like?
Well, the health department has been very cautious in terms of speculating when that may be and understandably so. They received, I want to say 4,000 doses for group 1A. And they've been, been working through, working through that. And as been widely communicated, our current practice has been in favor of holding those doses so 1A can get round one and round two because there's a booster required.
Right.
I think that it will go a lot faster to start 1B if that practice changes. But I like the health department, they have to be responsible and prudent in their actions as well to guarantee they're going to get their second round of doses in time for the four week window because the Moderna vaccine is the only thing that I know as of now is most likely what we'll be getting. And there's a 28 day window between dose one and the booster. As far as I know, they're still in 1A, like I said, our nurses and then some of our related services like speech language and OTPT. Some of our social, some of our social workers have been invited already to get their vaccine. And I'm hoping it's sometime soon, but I have not been given notifications to when. The county does have a prioritization process where they have, they have broken down all of our staff members by categories. They can even prioritize, you know, bus drivers to self-contained classroom teachers, to special ed teachers. But we have all those broken down and the numbers given to them. And if they get a limited number of doses, they'll go through their, they'll develop that prioritization list and say, these teachers need to get it first and on down the list. However, they've said if they get enough doses in our county to cover all educators, then they won't need that list. Now, where do we fall out of that 1.8 million out of the 3 plus million? Is are we before the 65 and older crowd which also lives in 1B? And the county has not shared that with me. I don't know what their plan is for that. In different counties, I'm sure it's different, much as everything else has been different county to county. But I do, we, we've, you know, we've begun surveying our teachers so they needed to know how many were willing to get the vaccine. And the number's extremely high, which I'm happy to see. But we're ready for them as soon as they say it's time. We've even offered our site if they can come to us because it's easy on our educators so we don't want anyone to not have a reason to go get it and be ready, be ready to roll. So hopefully they'll take us up on that offer and they'll come distribute them all on site to us.
Yeah, when I saw those numbers, I found it actually staggering at how expensive that number actually is. So obviously it's, the first tier or phase 1A needs to go through that, like you said, full set of inoculations to make it completely effective and within that, that window timeframe. But I, to me, it was, it was sobering to see how large that 1B list is or how expansive that is. So knowing that they're producing these inoculations, it's not just for our state or our region. It's nationwide and beyond. So when you take into account those kinds of numbers, it can become overwhelming as far as churning that out, getting it to people, getting it stored, getting all that stuff prepared and then having that strategic plan in place for deployment, so.
And from my understanding, you know, the, the elder, elder population, the CDC is recommending 75 and older and Illinois is allowing to go 65 and older and understandably so. But that obviously changes even more for our county whenever they decide to go down that road. So it's kind of, it's a, we're next, wait and see. Whenever they're, whenever they're ready for us, we'll be ready for them.
Something that I think you touched on, but I still wanted to go bring it up because I've seen in a couple of correspondence that have been sent to us. There's been, there's been a feeling from several parents that have said they're choosing to be 100% remote if they feel that they're going to get a quote unquote new teacher or substandard teacher. And I, I have no reason to believe that that would occur. You touched on it, I thought you touched on it, but I still wanted to bring it up and reiterate the point that that's not the case. There's nobody just being punished here. These are the circumstances that we've been dealt. This is how we're approaching this. And that nobody, no, no child or no parents feel that their child is being shortchanged because they're choosing a different option than, than a larger cluster of people.
You're 100% correct, Mr. Troy. The remote families are experiencing this change simply because 75% of our families want to be in person. That's the group of students that we could, we could handle the changes with the smaller group. Otherwise, the teachers they're getting are explore teachers, which have been out of the classroom for less than, less than two years. Our instructional coaches, some of our RTI facilitators, who are some of our very best teachers in our in leadership role. The majority of them have not been out of the classroom for all that long. They're all certified educators, certified with experience teaching the grade level in which they're going back to teach. Some have been out of the classroom for a while because they've been helping as a teacher leader in a district in other ways. That by no means should be taken as if that they're unqualified and not going to be an excellent teacher for our students. I have all the confidence in the world in not only are the teachers that are going back from this classroom, but our training, our team training them to be ready for online instruction because they've been serving as the support group for a lot of our in-person, of all of our teachers currently. So up to date on everything, they, they've been serving in a teaching capacity, just not a user capacity. So they're going to be shifting and getting caught up to make sure they're ready to, to practice what they've been helping others do for so long.
Yeah, I just didn't want that group to feel that they're, that the teachers are being short, not shortchanged, but graded or standard to the level of being treated as substandard. That's not the case at all. And, and it was, it's actually hurtful for me to read that because, you know, like you said, these are leader teachers who if anything else are more experienced and are capable of helping the other teachers who, who are, you know, less experienced in some way and helping them become better teachers and better leaders. So like I said, I just wanted to reiterate that point so that people who are watching this at home understood that and make that as clear as possible.
A lot of these, these teachers are familiar names. The students have seen them pop into their classroom. And even families with, with older children are recognizing these teachers, they're, they'll have a good experience.
Okay. And then kind of dovetail off of that, I think you touched on this too, is there will be a smooth handoff from teacher, teacher A to teacher B for those students that are staying remote so that the second teacher in the child's school year will become familiarized with that student before that, that session begins with the, not new teacher, but the second teacher.
That is, that is our intention. And as I stated earlier, they, they begin a, kind of an intensive boot camp type of a, of a training that starts on Wednesday this week and will, will carry on through next week. But a part of that, not only is it the practical instructional side in the remote world, but it's also the, the important stuff of understanding who our students are to the best of their ability. So that, that individualized conversation of current teacher to new teacher will occur of who, you know, who is, who is Paul, who is Melissa? And what do I need to know about them to help them as a learner individually? But then also what standards have they shown mastery of? What standards are they still approaching? What standards have they, have they not quite conquered? That that teacher can then know where they are academically as well. A lot of our teachers in that first week have indicated a desire to, like I said, to get to know you week, but then also the reassessment week. So there may be some, some reassessing of where students currently are so that teacher can learn where they are academically, individually, and personalize instruction throughout the remainder of the school year. They're taking this in strides and are very, some are nervous. So they want to do a good job because they know that it's high stakes for these families and then they want the very best for their kids. But they're approaching it like crows, they really are.
And then lastly, is I wanted to say thank you. A lot of what I've seen in not just this proposal, but in other proposals in my mind take a very common sense approach. Yes, there are complications. Yes, there are many details and levels of complexity that need to be sorted out in this. But, but I look at this as a, a common sense approach, trying to solve a very complex problem. So I wanted to thank you for all the time that you, the administration, the cabinet, everybody that's worked on this, teachers, health department workers, nurses, just everybody. I applaud you for the time that you've put in this. And it's not reflective in these meetings or the communications that go out, but I know that there's been a ton of time, a ton of effort that's been put into it. And I just want to take a couple minutes to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Troy, I appreciate that.
I'm good.
Okay. Bill and Leslie, I'm going to ask one more item, but if either one of you want to ask some questions, be ready to step up next. So talking a little bit about teachers, what was their, what has their involvement been with this plan? And where do we think they're at in regards to this plan? I know it's different at different levels, but what can you comment on both of those?
Uh, sure. Well, Dr. Schlicker has been, has convened the elementary task force. It's a group of teachers that some volunteered, some were tapped on the shoulder to, to be involved. And they have been. And they have been, they have served as a sounding board, as an evaluator, as an idea group to look at the plans and offer some feedback and help them progress. So that group has met, they had another meeting today as a matter of fact, but they've met a couple of times to look at this. And we've had steady communications, regular communications with our teacher and support staff, union leadership. And our HEA leadership has, we've shared the plan and given them the opportunity to offer feedback, concerns. And they, by all accounts, are supportive of the structure of the plan. And then from our return date, I've sought feedback regularly about any concerns that they have. And the concerns haven't been there. They exist.
I mean, they're there.
They exist. But by and large, our elementary staff, I believe, are ready to go. I think the vast majority of them are, based on, you know, the union has conducted their readiness surveys, their desire to come back surveys, and Mr. Ene has shared that feedback with me. It doesn't weigh into our decision as to how we're progressing, but at least he shares the information that he's getting from his members. You know, for full transparency, I think the elementary staff are upwards of 70% are ready to return, supportive of the plan and structure. The secondary level is a little bit more reticent. I think that has to do with students being there all day. I think it has to do with the transmission levels at the high school and the belief that high school students may not adhere to mask requirements. But I think it also has to do with the fact that our elementary teachers had a week in person and a lot of the unknown was answered for them and they saw how much they can control. Our secondary teachers have not had the opportunity to be in person yet. And I think a lot of their concerns will dissipate whenever they realize how much of their environment they do have the ability to control. And I think every person that has gone from what we experienced in the spring and in the early summer and we've transitioned back into our work environment, there were a lot of nerves and apprehensions. But when you get into your environment and realize how much control you have over your work area, you become comfortable a lot more quickly. And I expect that to come. You know, our district 158 is full of wonderful educators. In my 10 years here, I've had tremendous experience working alongside them. And I don't expect that whatever apprehension exists. It exists because, you know, they want to do right by themselves, their families. They want to do a good job for their students. They want to do a great job in terms of their parents' perception of them as an educator. And there's some uncertainty around teaching live and zooming kids in at the same time. And that apprehension comes out of their desire to do a good job and not disappoint. And they don't know how successful they're going to be because it's not easy. They've never done it before. It's going to be hard. And I think that we have to provide them a little bit of grace again in terms of this transition period as to how that instruction goes. Because for the first time in the history of education, we're live and in person at home for anyone to see at any point in time. And, you know, a teacher is typically someone who's been, a lot of times, has been pretty successful in school themselves as a student, but they're also usually perfectionists. And they want to be at their very best. And when that comes in and a parent that might be in the background watching what's going on, they get very nervous because they don't want to disappoint the people who they're serving. So I think a lot of it comes from a desire just to do a great job and they don't know what to expect yet because they haven't done it. But then some of our teachers want to be back full-time and they say they don't want to do the hybrid because they want kids here all day. So some of the no's are in that camp as well. But there's some general apprehension, but we'll support them and we'll get there.
Okay. So, Mr. Garen, do you have any questions?
On mute. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do not have a question, but I would like to add on to Mr. Troy's comments about how impressive these plans have been and moving with what's going on. There's like so many variables, so many fast-moving parts, so many changes to what's going on in the environment. I have an example. I have a real good friend who has a kindergartner who at the beginning of the school year fought me tooth and nail to, "We got to get our kids in school. They have to be in school. This isn't going to work. This is stupid, blah, blah, blah." Went on and on and on and on and on to the point where I like, didn't even want to see him anymore. And Saturday night, they're like, "No way, man. We're not going back. It's going so well right now with our daughter at home and how much she's learning. There's no way she'd be learning more in school and stuff." So now you've got parents who are completely on, you know, one side or the other normally, who are changing their mind and all that kind of thing too. So, I mean, it's just, it's mind-boggling how many different things that need to be pulled together to put together a plan that's going to work for the majority of the people. And it's, I think that I commend you and the administration for all you've done every step of the way to get us to where we are and where we're going. And, you know, hopefully this carries us through the end of the year and then, you know, we're in better shape going into next year. But just nice work and I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Garen.
Thanks. Melody, do you have any questions, Kevin?
Yes, I just have a couple of quick things. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rowe, for your presentation. I just also want to reiterate what Mr. Troy said about having confidence in our teachers that will be teaching our remote classrooms. These are some of our biggest rock star teachers. And so I'm excited to have them back in the classroom, even if it's just for a little bit. And along those same lines, I have a question. So because those educators are going to be teaching in the classroom, how will the interventions be done? I know RTI and things like that are going to be done during the asynchronous learning, but I'm more speaking specifically about the tier three interventions that are more involved. So when and how are those going to be conducted?
Sure. Well, let me explain a little bit. So we share some of the same concerns. And when we were talking about the numbers that we were going to have to reallocate to the classroom from our available staff, one of the first things that we did was tagged the last to go back to the classroom. And we moved on our prioritization list, our RTI interventionists, to the very last group to return to the classroom because those interventions have to continue. We can't let go of the supports that exist for our most struggling learners that may be on the process of entering a domain for a potential IEP or they're just struggling to grasp reading at the elementary level, which is so important. So we identified them as the last group to go back to the classroom. And the next step that we did, Miss Melody, was we had not, as we entered the school year and started remote, there were a couple of positions that we did not fill of this support group because of how we started the year. And so we went out and we posted those jobs and we filled a couple of existing positions that remained empty this school year. And so we had a couple of student teachers and some names that you'll see in a couple of weeks when we bring our HR report. But we filled those positions so that way we could preserve three of our interventionists to help maintain the process of RTI intervention at tier two and tier three. Our assistant principals are going to take on a large deal of that support and organization so those interventionists can get to the classroom level and deliver intervention. But that's also an area where we have some RTI aides that assist in that process that are not obviously going to a classroom as paraprofessionals. But we're also monitoring this and the possibility does exist that we may have to go out and hire one or two other support positions so that those interventions can continue. And I'm prepared to do that if we need to, but it's something that we're monitoring very closely. We just need to get all of our numbers very solid before we act. But those interventions will continue and we are monitoring that level of workload to be sure that our students get the support they need.
Okay. Thank you. And I am glad to see the collaboration between the remote teachers and the in-person teachers as far as discussing students. And so there's a nice seamless transition with what our students need. That was a big concern for me as well. Just one last question. Did you reach out to those who didn't respond one way or another to the survey? Just curious so we can be as thorough as we can with placing these students. I'm sure there were those that did not reach out, filled the survey at all.
Our elementary principals take that group on very seriously and they all receive personal communication from them to verify that they are in the area in which they need to be. But generally, if someone does not respond, they're placed in the remote group until we hear otherwise. But our elementary principals have been reaching out.
Okay, great. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Kevin, did you have anything?
No, I mean, I think a good sign of the presentation overall is there's an awful lot of detail in there and kind of come away with, yeah, this is right. This is the right path to go and the right time to take it. And, you know, I feel like it just strikes me as, you know, like the biggest thing is masks. And how do we be, I don't want to use the word punitive, but I almost already did in terms of, you know, how can we make sure that enforcement is active, you know, well-communicated and, you know, assertive in terms of frequency and messaging and ramifications of that.
Well, you know, I'm glad you brought that up, actually, because that was, you know, as Mr. Armstrong and I were reviewing the presentation this afternoon, that was one of the details that I contemplated adding because we spent a good amount of time talking about this in October. But I didn't want to get bogged down into some of those details and it came up here, which is perfect. So the process that we identified or solidified in October that will have our teachers follow at the secondary level, which is where the greatest concern lies, is that if a student is struggling to adhere to our expectation of them wearing a mask, a teacher will intervene and that student will make the correction. A teacher will fill out a referral for that student. Now, filling out a referral for a student does not mean that a consequence is being issued. It is documentation that that interaction occurred. That dean will have that on file, that number, the first offense has been corrected by the teacher. The second time that referral is filled out for that teacher or another teacher or any other member of the faculty intervening with a student not adhering to our mask requirement, that dean would then have a face-to-face with that student and a conversation with the student, the parent, to remind them of our expectations and that this is their last warning, so to speak. And upon that third offense of a student not adhering to our mask requirement, that student will be shifted to a remote learning for a period of time. And that a lot of that will have to do with the interaction, how that student handles that information. And upon the student returning to in-person learning, if that is an issue a fourth time, then that student can finish the semester in remote learning.
Okay.
So we're taking it very seriously because, especially at the secondary level, because the students have a greater level of personal responsibility and the ability to wear the mask, it's a matter of choice at that point.
And as I just think through all the mitigations and everything else you can do, it feels like that, in my mind, by far is the number one mitigate.
Agreed.
And then just the other comment would be is I think the key will be is how do you get, you know, I think you guys have been doing a great job of it, but how do you get that feedback going with, you know, day one? What went right, what went wrong? You know, how to learn and adapt and make sure that, you know, everyone is as much as possible moving in the same direction as opposed to kind of fighting with each other.
You know, we've had a great amount of success in the last few months holding some open forums for our staff. Anytime we've had these big changes, we've held open forums where I presented something similar to this in a much shorter, condensed version, but our staff has been able to submit questions and we run kind of a webinar where they submit their question. We unmute them and give them the floor to ask the question. And then whatever information is presented, obviously additional questions come and we just engage that way. That's been well received because we've been able to share a consistent message one time with our staff instead of relying on nine principals to ensure that that message is shared consistently. They do a great job. Our principals are fantastic, but when you can share it once, you know that everybody's receiving the same message from the source and questions can be answered directly. And honestly, personally, for me, gives me the opportunity to interact with our teachers in a way that I've missed during this whole period. Because when we tour a building right now, the doors are closed. There's a sign up that says Zoom in Progress. And a lot of times those one-on-one conversations where you can, you know, walk the park, so to speak, to bring in Walt Disney and what he used to do, make Disney great. You get to learn what's really going on when you go and just have a conversation about what are you seeing, what's happening? And it's a lot harder now in this environment when everyone's schedules are up in the air or they're teaching and you can't just pop into a classroom and see what's going on. So those have proven to be very positive. Our principals are doing a lot of the similar things. They have that free flow of communication with their teachers. And then our regular communication with HEA and hospital leadership, where any concerns are being brought to the table. We've had those standing meetings every couple of weeks with them just to stay in touch with what's going on. So our lines of communication are open. We know what our teachers are not happy with. We know what's going well. And we're working collaboratively as best we can to keep moving forward together. And that, but at the same time, we learned things the first day when we were in person that week in October. For instance, Leggie had a big struggle with her transportation that day when we tried to do something a little different and it didn't work. And we'll adjust and shift it back and learn from a mistake. Or learn, not a mistake, but learn from just trying something new that just didn't go how we had it planned. And we should expect that, that there are going to be bumps in the road as we come back. But as we told our teachers, we expect you to just get better each week. And they've done it. And I would ask that same grace from our community of when we come back, there's going to be bumps in the road. But we're going to do our best to do right by you and your children and take care of them.
The old German slogan, beat yesterday.
That's exactly right. Always get better.
That's right. Thank you.
Hi, yes. So I apologize. I do have, you know, a few questions. And I just want to say at the time, my questions are not to attack or shred. They are to really bring clarity to the community and help everybody to feel safe and secure in their choices and their decisions and what they're doing, even any final tweaks that may come about after the community chooses. So, you know, when I think of our community, I don't just think of our parents and our students. It includes our teachers. It includes our small businesses. It includes our seniors in the community. Who, you know, all those fans to be at risk or, you know, they're going to our Walmart center tools and shopping. And that's where a lot of high school students are. So it filters out to the community and it affects everyone, not just families. So when I ask these questions, they're not meant, you know, I'm just trying to get answers. So in one of your slides, you talk about social distance to the largest extent possible. If, I'm thinking to when we are in the hallway switching classes, trying to keep within that 50-person range and that, so does that verbiage kind of hover out? Because we're doing our best. Is there a staggered release for changing classes? What are we doing to win? And I know we're going to a quarter of our students because we got half and then half are gone. So we're down to a quarter. Even in those numbers, what are we doing?
In all of the IDPH guidelines, they acknowledge six feet of separation wherever possible. Because we're, you know, humans are social beings. We, a lot of the distinctions we've received is the desire for some normalcy for our secondary students' social, emotional wellbeing. And that hallway time is when that has occurred. So what I would say what we're doing is we're going to be reminding our students that passing periods are not for congregating. They're not for hanging out. All of the tables and chairs that the high school has had, they're not there anymore. And it's a matter of going from point A to point B. But walking with your friends in the hallway for less than five minutes, you can have a quick conversation and feel some semblance of normalcy in that process. In all of our classrooms, the high schools and middle schools, they operate on a schedule from period by period. You can't control the classroom environment the same way at the secondary level like you can at the elementary level. At the elementary level, I can tell you, there were going to be, in, you know, what would be Mrs. Meyerino's classroom, you are going to have eight students in the morning and nine students in the afternoon. I can guarantee six feet of separation. I can guarantee six feet of separation when they're in their desk. But in, in the secondary level, where it's period by period and you're dividing groups by alphabet, um, if our class maximum is 15, it'd be six feet of separate, six feet of separation. I can't guarantee that the way that's been broken down, you're not going to have 16 or 17 students in a classroom. However, we have, we have done everything that we possibly can to limit that, that overage in every scenario possible, but it's not, it's an imperfect science, because the schedule is, is a product of, you know, our, our advisory, our freshman advisory is broken down by alphabet, meaning all the As are together. So imagine how that process has, has been, uh, really painful, painstaking at the high school. I know they spent, uh, hours and hours trying to, to break that down, but we've done it as, as much separating as we possibly can. But you know, you're, you're going to be passing less than five minutes in between class periods. Um, and we're going to do the best, very best job that we can. Uh, and of reminding our students, the, the raid away lessons, the announcements that they use. Our students all know what is expected of them, because they've had to live this in society for 10 months now. You know, because you can kill me if I'm an optimist, but I believe that our students want to be back in school that have opted for hybrid so badly, that this is going to go very smoothly and they're not going to, uh, risk not being able to maintain that if they're choosing this as their option. Uh, it's not going to be perfect, but we can't accept, expect that level of, of perfection. We, we're not, I told, I said this to our, our principals and some of our teachers, we can't wait and expect that we're going to have this perfect package before we open the doors and come back. We have to, we're doing the best with what we have. We believe this is, is a safe time to come back, that we have the mitigation efforts, that we can create an environment that are safe for our, the children of our community. Um, and the health department's behind it. So I think those are the most important things to keep in mind.
Thank you. With, you, you touched earlier on, uh, the cleaning and disinfection. What is the guideline? I know you talked about the, the chemical could be on the surface for a minute and kill, I would even touch it, but didn't we have the, the spray, the aesthetic spray, the static spray?
Do you, do you mister?
Yes. Are we, will we be utilizing that?
Every night.
Every night. So there is no opportunity to do that at least at the case of five?
There is not. We don't have, uh, we don't have the staff or enough emisters to do it in that, that amount of time. Um, but the wiping of the desk and the high touch surfaces is the best way to go. Uh, Mr. Brinkowski is, I'm sure available, um, if he'd like some specifics of that, but we don't have the ability.
Does that spray, what's the duration of the, of that, that spray is working? How long is it killing for? How long, will it cover that 24-hour period or is it only kind of?
Oh, no, absolutely. The, the emist that, that is, is, our ABM custodial contract uses each night will kill everything on the surface that it sprays before the next day, without a doubt. It's, it's been, it's been happening currently, um, and then will continue. But the best approach in between groups of students and in between classes is a quick wipe down of, of the desks where the students have been and, and move on. It's at the one-minute stand time. And we have, we have an hour and 55 minutes in between groups and in the passing periods. I mean, we have 90-minute classes. So this is the same scenario I've, I've given to a, a handful of our teachers and, and our principals. We have 90-minute classes and the wipes and disinfectant spray, there's the opportunity, um, to start the cleaning process before that class leaves, one or two minutes before they leave. I mean, 90-minute classes, five-minute passing period, and then, because the teachers can still do what they need to do in terms of, you know, at high school, one of the biggest struggles is you have a class period, you have a five-minute window to get done what you need to get done, which is use the restroom, refill your, your drink or water or whatever, answer questions for students. If you have to change classes, move to a new classroom, plug in so you're ready. In some cases, unlock the door so the kids aren't congregating at the door. So that's where some of their concerns lie and are valid concerns. I think we just have to recognize in a 90-minute class period, if I need to steal a minute or two to ensure that the next group coming in is safe, it's perfectly appropriate to do that and no one's going to look down on you if you choose to do that.
Good. You mean case of five? What is the target number that we're looking for to keep in, in, in the classroom for the sessions right now? Some in-person students are also going to be reassigned, you showed that especially with a kindergarten example.
Correct.
So what's your target number for, for the class?
Well, it depends on the building, because remember the, the architect numbers that we use to evaluate each of our buildings to show us what, um, what the maximum number of students that could fit in each room and maintain six feet of separation. Um, it's different per building. For instance, like Martin, they told us 20. Well, 20 wasn't a realistic number, because it's wall-to-wall desks. So you have to account for use of the, of the whiteboard and what the teacher's going to be doing at the front of the room. Um, the teacher desk is, at some point, it's got to be in the classroom. So what we've done, and, and at Cheswick, I want to say the numbers were like 14. At, at, at McCabean, it was a different number, at Leggie was a different number, so it was not a cookie cutter situation at all. Um, but we worked with those teachers where the numbers were coming in kind of wonky. And if, if it, if it was imperfect and we could preserve and maintain that the, the students not having to change teacher, and all it was was, hey, as a teacher, can you, can we remove your big teacher desk and give a standing workstation and a, and a storage cabinet in the corner? And the reception was absolutely, if it means I don't have to lose any of my students. So those types of, of things were, were, uh, were taken into account, where we could preserve as many classrooms as, as we possibly could. And our principal would have been fantastic in terms of being able to, to preserve that. Um, we're still, there's still some change to be expected, but the numbers are minimal. Um, because a lot of those efforts that, that they have and the teachers to make whatever changes necessary to keep the group. But the number in each classroom is totally dependent on the size of the, of the building and the design of the, the design of the room.
Okay. Thanks, Ben. When remote kids, when will they meet their, their teacher? When is week one for, you know, that get to know you and that update, you know, is that, is the 25th?
That's, that's a, that's a good question. I'm glad that you asked that, because we, in, in some of the conversations that I had with families, that we were toying with the idea of making the transition early, um, so that our, our in-person students have the ability to, to meet a new teacher if, if that was necessarily happening and our remote students, um, could get to know their new teacher. Um, and, and, and I even shared that was, was one of our goals in some of the conversations I had with families. And throughout this process, and what our curriculum department and what our principals have learned, um, is, is they felt that because they were able to minimize the number of in-person students that were going to have to change teacher by maybe shifting to a larger classroom to accommodate more students, um, they were able to limit that number so much that the 25th will be the first day, um, that remote students see their new teacher. They'll obviously know who that teacher is, that teacher's going to try, teacher's going to pop it into their remote classroom so that it's not a, uh, a, a, an uncomfortable environment, but we're not going to have the week lead up like at one point we were discussing.
Got it. Going, moving on to special education. We, we talked about specialized education through three-day-minute services, however, they, they chose whether they were in person. But can a student drop in for services, for in-person services, provided they, you know, obviously can't provide transportation, whether it's a parent says, I want to put you in for OT or social workman? Can they, would they work with the individual building to, to try and facilitate that?
That's been, that's been an ongoing challenge. And I, and I would welcome Dr. Del Castillo to, um, to join the conversation. Uh, it's been an ongoing challenge, because especially services like occupational therapy and physical therapy are, are very difficult to deliver and receive via Zoom. And that's been one of our goals, is to, is to create this, the walk-in services. Um, and so for our, our in-person students, obviously they're going to receive that when they're physically present. But for our remote families, I, I welcome the Dr. Del Castillo to, to share with us how, uh, how we're going to, to accomplish that and any possibilities in the future if someone needs to come in.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Dr., this has been an ongoing conversation. What, uh, we are basically waiting, uh, to have the schedules ready with the remote students and the in-person students. And, uh, we have that possibility open. Uh, we have the idea of inviting the remote students to join groups of students that are in person uh, because of the capacity of, uh, the, our OTs or our PTs or a speech. So the idea that we have is that if we already have a group of, uh, students that are receiving a speech services, for example, then we'll, we'll invite our remote students to join that group in that specific time. So we'll schedule our remote students to join our in-person students who are specific times, so they'll be part of the group, uh, with, uh, and that's the way that I will receive the related services. And we're talking about OT, PT and a speech. That's probably the best way and the most efficient way to, uh, deliver the services to our, uh, remote students. And it will also be, uh, the work that they will collaborate with the in-person students that we're remote students. The only thing that we're waiting for is to have the schedules ready. And I think that we'll probably start working on that project next week.
So one of the, one, one thing to note is, you know, some of our special, special groups, like in our dual-language program and our, um, special services, their schedule a lot of times is reliant on the larger group of the general education schedule. So, um, getting that general education schedule out for the families that adopted it, Dr. Del Castillo and team have been, um, have been feverishly working to complete those schedules, so there's some final tweaking that's still taking place, as she referred to. So, um, that's, that's an interesting part of the process that, uh, a lot of times gets overlooked. Is our special populations, there's, the work has to begin after the larger schedule is completed, because it, it, that piece of the puzzle fits into the, the larger puzzle. Uh, so it's an additional challenge that a lot of times we don't think about.
Okay, so this is still an ongoing, it's being ironed out as to how we look.
That's correct. But I do acknowledge that we, uh, getting our OT and PT services has been, i- i- it's challenging doing them through Zoom. And I, you know, all, all the parents that have been working so hard to get that done, I, you know, it, it's not easy and that, we, we, we know that. And we're, we want to work with them.
Um, PE, how is, when I think of PE, is it, you know, running, a lot of, you know, heavier breathing? Are we going to be okay with masks and, uh, rigorous activity or are we kind of holding down PE? Or what are we doing to keep that, you know, the kids safer in that, in that gym environment?
Sure. Dr. Schlichter, if you are on, and we'll talk specifically about the PE special, I'd welcome that. I think there are some, some, uh, adjustments that have been made.
Sure. Uh, so with PE, um, at the elementary level, obviously PE will still be delivered remotely, both synchronously and asynchronously, asynchronously. Um, so from a specials perspective, um, we won't have the, the question, the issue that you raised in your question. However, at the secondary level, um, even way back in the fall when we had, uh, begun discussing coming back, there's needing to be work done with those, um, PE teachers and in their PLCs to modify. So absolutely, it's possible to do it safely, but it might be a little bit modified in terms of use of equipment, in terms of proximity, obviously maintaining that six-foot distance, right? Makes it a little bit different. There would be certain activities that might be replaced with others. So I, you know, I don't think we would say it would be a typical PE experience. Um, but our teachers, and I'll just point this out, because I think it's really important for us to just remember, as a part of our social emotional learning review and the implementation, our PE teachers and health teachers actually as well, have played an absolutely essential role in our tier-one SEL. Um, they're becoming trained at the secondary level in, in ruler, which, um, if you recall, we, we had a presentation related to that being some of our tier-one infusion, uh, of our system, it's a Yale University system. Um, and the training is almost complete, the implementation is to train the trainer model. Um, uh, Mrs. Romero, uh, Kat Romero is spearheading that out of our department and doing a fantastic job. And so those teachers, administrators are getting trained, infusing that. And so I think there's really a lot of robust from a physical education, but just from an overall wellness and health standpoint, that our PE teachers will be able to plan for.
Thank you.
Well, what I hope that you walk away from that is our PE teachers have an opportunity to do, really put in practice what they've been working on in the background, is, is they're taking the lead in it, on our, our social emotional learning, um, process at the high school. And you think about what our students need as they come back, is that social emotional support, how to process some of the isolation and get back into the swing of things safely and, and there's some conversations that have a great opportunity to occur there.
I think that's a great opportunity, is we can all, we can all, a little bit of that physical activity to work on, you know, the emotional health and the mental health and, and reacclimating and getting past, you know, what's the past 10 months have done.
So some of our PE classes are going to occur in a classroom, because some of the gym space is being used for lunch, um, or other, other things. So there'll be more classes happening in the field house. And then some of these PE classrooms will be meeting in a classroom instead of a gym, because of the social emotional, um, it may be better suited for that environment. And it may be both, depending on the day, so.
Got it. We talked about that. Uh, you, the high groups, if, uh, the students get sick, they're, they get COVID and they're, they're out for 10 days. Where do they go? Who, I mean, are they going to be temporarily assigned to a remote teacher? How do they get in touch with their teacher when they're out for 10 days?
That's a good question. Um, our elementary hybrid students, if, if they are quarantined, um, or in isolation, they are going to remain with their same teacher and they're going to zoom into that classroom. It may be different, it may not, they may not zoom in for the entire day. That teacher may want to handle that a little bit differently, they may want to focus with them on, um, some small group work and some asynchronous work, depending on how they feel. Um, but they're going to remain with that classroom and for their portion of the day, uh, if they're able, they'll zoom into that live instruction and the teacher just may structure that a little bit differently. That's going to be one of the areas where we're going to need to be, um, going to be gracious for, with our teachers and, and patient on how that works out. Because, uh, obviously in an elementary classroom, when you're asked, having a kindergartner or a first grader zoom into a classroom is going to look very different in terms of keeping their attention than they have in the current remote environment. Um, and, uh, but we'll, we'll work that, work that out. It's going to happen.
Right. I mean, hopefully it is just our, you know, far and in between, so the reality is, there's going to be any type of illness, whether it's COVID or a cold or, you know, they've got to stay home and think, oh my God, are they going to actually have to go this extended period? So it's good to know that they can, uh, have that opportunity, because even for part of the time, whole of the time.
But our remote, our remote sections are going to remain intact on their own. Uh, students will not be going in and out of our remote section.
And I'm going to ask again, I've asked you questions many times, and I just want to reiterate, we will remain committed and staunch to sending children home if they are displaying symptoms.
Absolutely. There is a, a, a decent amount of, of concern about, um, about, you know, dishonesty on, on a health form, um, or giving a child Tylenol when they don't feel so well and send them to school. I think that concern exists throughout our community in terms of whether they feel safe enough for their kids to come back. Um, so, you know, I, I just ask, this is not the time to try and, um, do what I've done with my kids before when they're dealing with a cold. Hey, Grin and Barrett, you're, you're going to make it today. Um, if you develop a fever, call me. Um, I, that's, that's how I was raised. You know, you go to school and you tough it out, unless you have a fever. Um, but we're, you know, worldwide pandemic is now is not the time to do that. We have to take the extra precaution and just, if, if, if any of those symptoms are present, be pleased, we need people to be on, on the safe side and just let's make sure that that's not a positive COVID case. Because the last thing we need is an entire school to have to close down because someone sent their kid to school because they wanted them to tough it out.
Yeah, we need to, you know, the community for their support on that. So if they, if a call is made, you know, your child's not feeling good, trying, please don't fight that.
And in all of our nurses' offices, we have isolation rooms, where if someone is exhibiting symptoms, um, they can go there. Um, you know, and we, we're actively, uh, preparing for even, you know, a, a rapid testing option that we're, we're working on. Um, we have a little bit more work to do with the, with the health department.
Yeah, I was going to add, that's great. Um, what about that question? When, when would we be notifying families if there was a COVID diagnosis in a class? So is it at the time when it's infected or what they're sometimes calling probable? Are we waiting until we get the official positive results? When will, would a notification go out?
Sure.
Um, to families? And does it go to everybody in their classroom then? Or is it, well, this is Sufi in the front and Joe is in the back, he's nowhere near, you know, 50 feet away, so we won't notify Joe's family? Or will the whole class be notified? What is, what, what happens?
Well, there's two different levels of notification. First level of notification is, were you a close contact? Um, and that would indicate the need to quarantine or isolate based on a positive test. So if the student has a positive test, they go through the contact tracing process. Um, the forms for what, the questionnaire that our nurses would be asking our students are on our website in that COVID dashboard. on our website in that COVID dashboard. The link to the McHenry County Department of Health, those forms are easily accessible so that they, so the parents know exactly the types of questions we would be asking of their children and them. And if you're, you're determined to be a close contact, you're going to receive personal communication from us that you're a close contact and you need to quarantine for a period of time to determine if symptoms are going to develop or if maybe at, you know, they're recommending, recommending that after five days of the close contact is when, is the right window of time to be tested. And then there's the general notification. So each time that we have a positive case, the school will be notified, as, as was current practice when we were back in session. If it's just a classroom situation, if you're a close contact, you'll receive specific contact from us. If you are not contacted about being a close contact and just receive the general, a positive case, what has been found in your school, there's no action you need to take other than we're making you aware.
Okay. Okay. That would be my question. I'm sure we'll be thankful. Thank you.
Your honor.
Okay. Anybody else? No, that's okay. Questions need to be asked. So anything further from anyone? Now, I don't think, I don't know if you have anything further. You took on a bunch here.
I did not.
Or plus, after your presentations, I don't know if you want to, if there's anything to summarize, wrap up from that. I mean, I'll, I'll just say, echo, yeah, I, I know you guys have worked real hard, especially since the, the county and the CDC kind of modified back in, I think it was around the 18th of December or whatever, and, and started sharing with us these potential mitigation strategies to, to, to work through the specific counting metrics we're dealing with. So, you know, I know it's, all of us are, you know, trying to find a way that's as safe as possible to get our kids back in school. We know that's what's best ultimately for them, but wanting to keep our community members and our teachers safe as possible. And I think, you know, you, you demonstrate that throughout the, the presentation. And I, I take solace in the fact that I, I, I know there's risk involved to a certain degree, but I know, like you said, I know we're trying to do everything and to mitigate that as much as possible and, and, and get these kids back in. And that's really what's important. So I applaud the efforts of everyone involved to do that.
Well, thank you. And I, and I would echo your, your statement that I, you know, while, yes, we want, you know, what I would hope the community would walk away from this presentation and discussion tonight with is, is yeah, we, we would love, we want our students back in school. But we want to do it the right way responsibly with the health department at our side. That has been our, our decision-making process from the beginning. And although it's been challenging, that we've been in a remote environment as long as we have, we were making the best decision that we possibly could with the information and our partners at our side. And that, that's continued to be our process. So, you know, very excited about the possibility of our students returning, that we are not deviating from the metrics. And I just, I don't want anyone to walk away thinking that we've abandoned them because we absolutely haven't. It's an evolution of learning of how we can best control our environment while using them as a, as an assistance to our decision-making process. But, but thank you, I appreciate you.
Yeah, no, I mean, they, people can go on the McHenry County website and look at school metrics and look at what they issued on the December 18th. And then that in conjunction with some other things that have been provided in the last several weeks have assisted in moving us in this direction. So, and again, all of this, you know, we, we get, you know, we get a fair amount of correspondence through email and other mediums as far as, on both sides of this issue, as far as whether to be back or not be back. Many of those are, are emotional and, and they're, it's easily, easy to understand. They're, they're their kids. It's very easy to understand how emotional people are about it. At the end of the day, us, you from administration, us, the school board members, we, we have to look at all information, take the emotion out of it and, and try and make the best possible decision that we think is, is for everyone involved, kids in the community. And I think that's what we've consistently tried and, and have done throughout this process. So I, I think I'm, you know, I feel good about, you know, that we're, we're doing this the right way, as best I can put it. So with that, I just want to make sure there's no, I mean, the, the administration is going to move forward with this. I just want to make sure there is no, anybody with any kind of dissenting opinion in regards to this. Bill and Leslie, I don't know. I'm assuming everybody is, is on board to a, a, a degree such that they aren't in any dissent with the direction the administration's going.
No dissent here.
All right. Since Leslie, you're not speaking up, and I know you would if you did.
Yes, I would speak up.
I know you would. Okay, good deal. All right on that. So I think you have, you know, the, the board is, is in support of what you're doing here.
Thank you.
Okay. With that said, we will move to item seven. It's an action item, seven dot one is the amendment to the calendar for, I must be brain dead, for PD number five. What am I missing here? What, I don't get the abbreviation.
It's a, it's a remote learning day. Number five is professional development.
Professional development, that's what it is. Number five. I apologize. I wasn't, wasn't in tune. So remember.
Sure. Thank you. As Dr. O had mentioned early on in his presentation, we would be bringing in item here. As you probably recall, the State Board of Education has given all districts five remote planning days that they can utilize for various professional development and getting ready for blended and/or remote learning days, or remote learning with students. And so the district utilized two of those at the very beginning of the school year. We utilized a third October 6th as we prepared for our elementary in-person return to the buildings back in the fall. And then we utilized one this past Monday, beginning of the semester, as changes were happening at some of the secondary levels, as well as staff learning a little bit about the hybrid and beginning to make changes. So at this time, just through a collaboration of various stakeholders and discussions, we feel that Friday, the 22nd would be an ideal time to request and utilize that fifth remote learning day with our staff. As Dr. O has gone through in detail, the, what that would look like at the ECC, at the elementary and at the secondary levels. And so there's a variety of different things that might take place at each of those levels. We do know that there would be time and it would be critical for staff to communicate with one another about students that might be changing from one classroom to the, to the next. There may be some time on, as people are planning to give some reporting of where a student is at before they are switching over from one class to another. There could be a variety of different preparation things that need to get done right before students are, are coming into the building that might not be able to be done at this time. So some small operational type things. And so again, at this time, administration is requesting that we make a slight change to the calendar to shift to that Friday, January 22nd, from a student attendance day to our fifth remote planning day. And just as a reminder, this day would not be something that would be added to the end of the calendar. ISBE does give all districts five days to utilize. While students wouldn't be in attendance, it's not something that does need to add to the end of, of the calendar. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Anything from Bill or Leslie? No, I have.
No questions for me.
Yeah. All right. Okay. So if there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion to accept the amendment to the calendar for planning day number five is presented. Give me a second. Second from Mr. Craddy. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Okay. We had suspended closed session, so I'd like to make a motion to go back into closed session at 9:19. Second from Mrs. Meyerino. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Meyerino? Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. We will go back into closed session. Okay, motion passes. We will go back into closed session.
Okay, we're back from closed session. It is 10:10. Can we have roll call? I don't know if Julie's still there? Probably not.
Probably not.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Troy, I'm here. Mr. Garin? Mr. Craig?
Here.
This is Malloy.
This is Mauroino.
Here.
There's five of us still here. No action out of closed session, so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 10:10.
Aye.
Second from Mrs. Mauroino. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're done. Very good.